All right, so we're going to call to order the regular meeting of the Neshoba Regional School Committee at 6:00 PM. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. You can all rise if you choose to do so. Your side with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, guys, so our first matter of business is to actually go into executive session, and I will lean on my esteemed colleague, Mr. Gleeson, to give us the motion.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I've moved to go into executive session at 6:01 PM pursuant to Master of Law's Chapter 38, Section 21, Subparagraphs A, Subparagraph C3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, Unit A/Unit C. Executive session to include the school committee and Superintendent Downing and Superintendent Laura Friend and Director of Human Resources, H.R. Storka. School committee member Brett Collins will be excused, if he is here, from the executive session due to a conflict of interest. The school committee will return to open session at conclusion of the executive session.
And I do so declare. Do I have a second?
Second.
Let's take the vote. Sean Dorr.
Yes.
Sharon.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Joe?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Amy Vessel?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Anne Spott?
Yes.
All right, thank you. We are in executive session. So we are back on the public access. We have returned.
I was watching.
The door's open, right?
Yeah, it's supposed to be open.
Okay.
Okay, so we're back into regular session, everyone. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to the next matter on the agenda, and then a public comment. I have none. And so we shall move to the consent agenda next, and as you guys can see, there are four things in the consent agenda. I'd like to ask ahead of time, everybody's okay with keeping everything inside of it? Yeah? All right, I will turn to Chair Gleeson to give us a motion on the consent agenda.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I've moved to approve the consent agenda of April 12, 2023, containing the draft of the school year 2423 minutes of March 8, 2023, draft meeting minutes of March 15, 2023, and the draft special meeting minutes of April 3, 2023, and warrants of April 14, 2023.
Have a second. This is a tight one. I think we're Sharon. Skip to Sharon. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, raise your hand. Lovely. Consent agenda passes unanimously. Without Maureen, she is... She's back. All right, so on to the chairperson, school committee chairperson update. I did have just a couple of things to share with you guys. Thing one, and I guess I could say this later, but I'll say it now. If you are a chairperson of a subcommittee, can you please get the minutes that you have approved to ALIDA at some point in the near future? And if you have minutes that have not yet been approved, please do that as well. So just a quick note on that. And then, Joe, later on, remind me to, when you're giving your subcommittee update on the school building committee, we want to talk about some deadlines and dates because we have to add a couple of meetings for those of us who are remaining. All right, everybody, we are, hopefully you have no objection. We're going to delay the student representative report until hopefully one of our representatives can join us. And so that brings us to the superintendent report next.
Super. Thank you, ma'am chair.
All right, take it away, sir.
So it's been an exciting time in the Neshoba Regional School District, everyone. There is a lot of content in your meeting packets tonight. So I'm really going to count on the fact that you've reviewed the materials, and I'll just be brief in these pieces, since all that detail is provided for you, and anyone out there in the community can go into our meeting materials and read the detail in those meeting materials. We are currently in the process of our principal search at the center school. And so we've collected candidates over vacation week. We'll begin the interviewing process with those candidates, followed up with interviews, site visits, and our evening forum. We've notified the center school committee, and the details on those dates are provided in the report. I will take this opportunity also to announce, as an email went out to the center school families this afternoon, Mr. Robin Welch, who is a former principal, Massachusetts Principal of the Year in 2006, is, he's retired and has agreed to come be the interim assistant principal for the remainder of the year to assist with all the student life activities, sort of the buses come, buses go, and everything in between part of the student day. And that will allow Ms. Avlick, along with Ms. Friend, as she is assisting center school, to do the administrative work that needs to be done around the school, the important work that needs to be done with families and students and teachers. And so we're going to be very happy to have them with us. Also included in your packet is a letter that was sent out to the community regarding school safety. It saddens me every time we have to address this topic. It is the number one thing that keeps all of us in the school system, whether we're superintendents, teachers, parents, students, anybody, when we hear of shootings in schools. I want you to know that in Neshoba, we have some very specific protocols, trainings, updates that we conduct on a regular basis as a way to just keep our intellect and our decision-making sharp, given the unforeseen events. Nurse Gobekki, who is our head safety officer, her and I are meeting with our local law enforcement in the coming weeks to review our plans, talk about recommended updates, begin thinking about processes, what else can we do as a school system? I do have to say, we don't talk about those things in public meetings, nor do we publish those things in our materials, because you do not want to publish your plans to the public because you don't want your intentions to be known by, you know, an actor of ill will. So forgive me for non-disclosure. We try to be as transparent as we can, but that is an area where non-disclosure is important so that we can maintain our safety protocols to protect our kids. So that's a bit of a somber note, and I hate to bring it to this committee, but I felt like it was important to do so. I've also been reviewing with Mr. Moll Karen and with our facilities director, Mr. Frieswick, our safety infrastructure in the district, and we're working on that as well, and the standardization of that infrastructure and assessing its effectiveness and making sure it's always up to date and functioning, and so we do those regular checks as well. Moving on next is, in your packet, there's a link to the FY '24 budget book. So I encourage everyone in the community out there to tap into it. Everybody here knows the information in it. You're a big part of that process. This is a great example of how Mr. Moll Karen and his team are raising that bar of excellence in terms of how we're communicating with our communities around school finance. So commend Mr. Moll Karen and his entire team for the work they did to put out a highly professional budget book to our community and to our towns this year. That was a lot of work, and we hope to give it out at a sooner date in future years, as now we have the template built.
Yeah, do you want to hit pause at any point in time, or do you want to keep going, and then we'll ask questions?
Ma'am chair, I will do what you ask.
I think it's probably a good idea to hit pause really quickly, and go ahead, Amy.
So one question about the budget book is how it's being distributed to community members, because is it being mailed in addition to being provided in a digital format, or?
No, it is not being mailed, because it is an 80-page document. That would be extremely costly to mail that budget book out to our communities. And in talking to our town administrators, they frankly said they just wanted the digital links for distribution as well. And we are making hard copies so that those hard copies can be kept both in our office here and also in the town hall offices as well.
So the best way to access it is just on the website?
It's on the website, and we will be building that year after year. As we've talked about with the website, we're going to be converting platforms, so we'll be able to have our budget books presented in a year-over-year format that will be very attractive and easy to access for our community.
Any other questions so far? All right.
And I'm going to do my next part once we get into, let me see here. The hiring process, we'll talk about when we get into updates on strategic work. So at this point, I would like to introduce Assistant Superintendent Friend to talk about our March 17 PD update.
Sure.
I know this is included in your packet, but we had our March 17 full-day professional learning day a few weeks ago now, and it was nice to have a couple of our school committee members join us for that day. The day was well received. The feedback was positive. I shared some snippets of the feedback in the packet. And we're excited to begin the day with the voices of our graduates, which I know has spoken about with you before March 17. But two graduates speak to us about how they paved their path after they left us at Neshoba, what they're doing, and the advice they have for our Neshoba educators. And then that segued into a Voices of Neshoba video, which we shared with our staff. The video's about 20 minutes. It's included in the link in the packet, and I encourage you to look at it. Included in that link is a booklet of all of the Voices of Neshoba that we had received when we sent out our solicitation from graduates from the past 10 years, "Where are you now, Neshoba?" And what advice do they have for us as it relates to our portrait of Neshoba graduate competencies? And so shout out to Bridget Hannigan, who really, really contributed, and I know she contributed to the budget book as well, and presented a really professional-looking and comprehensive booklet that represents our student voices. We had 78 graduates respond to that survey, and all of their feedback is represented in that booklet. And we compiled the video as well, which really, I believe, had an impact on our staff and for two reasons. It's, one, it validated the work that our teachers do every day, and, two, it also provided inspiration about our next steps as it relates to really supporting our students with the skills that they need to be happy and successful in the current and future world. Content is important, but it's the skills that our students told us were really critical. So I would encourage you, if you have the time, to take a look at the booklet and watch the video. I think it's worth a look. After our opening session, our faculty and staff engaged in a variety of different professional learning sessions, from emerging technologies as it relates to AI, to digging into Museum of Science, Engineering as elementary units, to engaging in UDL, diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging, cultural proficiency. It was a wide array of offerings, which I know that you had seen before when I had shared our offerings with you before March 17. We had 356 respondents to our end-of-the-day feedback, which was a good turnout in terms of feedback. It was hard to choose the comments to showcase. Karen Bovaire, who is our math curriculum lead, who's functioning as an instructional coach right now, I tasked her with this. These are the ones that she selected, and they are selected as a representative of the feedback that we have been provided. And then, if you scroll down a little bit, you can see that those are the, on a Likert scale, the rating for the day, we had 97% favorable rating for the day, combined excellent and good rating, which we're really, really pleased to see that feedback, which was, I would say, an overall improvement from last year, but I'm not sure that that would be a fair comparison, because the team last year worked really hard to present a really informative and comprehensive day as well. And last year's Professional Development Day was also all virtual, and this year we were in person. And I think everyone really appreciated the opportunity to come together in person. So it was a good day. Thank you for the opportunity, and thank you to the committee and to our community members for supporting that day. It had an impact.
And to Mr. Gleeson for joining us with his special guest. We really appreciated you coming.
Thank you. Ms. Park was there as well, but I just want to say to...
Oh, yes, we got to see each other at one session as well.
I did want to say to Ms. Friend, there was a comment there, it was like, said, some of the comments were very positive. And one of them was the best one I've ever been to. I have to say, as a non-educator, it was outstanding, and I really learned a lot. And I appreciate you extending an invitation to myself and to my guests who attended the PD of March 17. Thank you again.
Any questions on that element of the superintendent report?
All right. Can I just make a comment?
Yes.
Because I was able to attend that day too, and the energy was so, it was just so uplifting. There was so much good energy in that building. People were happy to be there. People were excited about the opportunities that they were having. There was something there for everyone, from a first-year teacher to a veteran teacher who had been teaching forever, and from hands-on, really like, "I can use this tomorrow" kinds of things, to more thought-provoking, in-depth kinds of, you know, really challenging you to think deeply about your practice. So it was really, a really great day, really incredible opportunity.
Sorry, thank you.
That's awesome. I'm going to leave.
Thank you.
I just wanted to also extend a shout-out to our faculty and staff. We had many faculty and staff who shared their knowledge and expertise by facilitating a session or running a session, upwards of 32 staff. So I know one of the comments was, I think, that they were humbled by learning from their colleagues, and that's the kind of energy that we want to continue to draw and support. So thank you to our faculty and staff for stepping up, really, and sharing all of their knowledge and expertise, helping the day even better.
Thanks, Lauren.
That's great.
Great. We'll move into our updates on strategic work. I have an update on the professional practice goal, and then we do have three presentations. We promise we will be tight in our presentations. I love that. When you saw that perhaps on the agenda, I thought, "Whew, we're in for a ride tonight." But the first is my professional practice goal. If you remember our goals, the first, in student learning, was tied around the curriculum curating efforts this year. And the second was around hiring high-quality faculty and staff and the work that's gone into that. So this gives just sort of a brief update on that. I'm excited to share with this group that we've done some practices. Some are in our practices of how we select candidates and actually interview. So we've done some anti-bias work in our administrative team and some trainings around that, and that is part of our principal interview process to help people understand we all walk into the room with biases. How do we then check for them so that we can evaluate all candidates that enter the room fairly? We also have procured a platform called Unified Talent. Unified Talent's going to be a game changer for us in terms of finding candidates, keeping candidates, and quickly going to candidates in situations where we need them, because it is going to be our internal database system for which we historically catalog all of the applicants who come to the Neshoba Regional School District over time. And so we'll still interface with SchoolSpring, but SchoolSpring will direct them to come back to our platform where they will provide all their materials. And then we are able to, through digital workflows, optimize those workflows to expedite the hiring processes so we don't get logged down in the transfer paperwork. It also helps us in targeting candidates. So as Mestoica and her team and the principals are participating in four job fairs that are happening this spring, of which the DESI Digital Job Fair was today. And so we participated in that DESI Digital Job Fair. And what we're doing in these job fairs is trying to build our database of candidates that ultimately, when we put our postings out, we can then turn to those pools to find high-quality candidates for our school system. So we made some extraordinary efforts, I think, and I commend Mestoica and her team. They had four straight days of seven hours of training onboarding this new platform that will then replace our other platform, so it will be a net level cost to the district in the end. So any questions on the hiring process update relative to the goal?
Does the new platform screen resumes for you?
Wouldn't that be nice?
No.
No, it doesn't. It doesn't. What it does is it can collect and access to them is quick and easy. So you still have to go through and read the resumes. So I will say, between our open D position, our assistant principal position, and our principal position, and the director of digital learning, I personally, over the last three days, have read over 150 resumes, as well as cover letters, to identify candidates for those positions. So I'm encouraged right now, at the following of candidates that are applying. It's better than just two, three months ago. It's, but it is that time of year.
So as you're reviewing resumes, how are you combating implicit bias?
So one of the things that we do is, when looking at, for instance, a principal resume, I screen the resumes to make sure that they have the criteria for the job. Then a form goes out to our cabinet team and our principals to go through and provide their feedback on the candidates through that, and then they submit it to me anonymously, and I look for patterns amongst a group to do that. The piece that we did in the training was around, really, and it's a very difficult thing, of how to curb your own bias when looking at the candidate and just applying it to the criteria of the job description. So the link to the job description is provided as well so that our people looking at them can look at the job description, look at the resume, then give it a general rating of, does it meet the criteria of the job description from what you can glean from the resume and the cover letter? So not a perfect science, but we're organizing it in such a way to where we're trying to get some inner rate of reliability on how we look at those things.
All right.
Great. So everybody remember that when we do superintendent evaluation. We have a few meetings and a couple of meetings. Okay, so I think the next part of updates on strategic work is the school choice presentation. So in your packets, I refer to a memo that was also referenced, and it's quite lengthy and has a lot of detail, so I craft it as a separate document. I would like to say to the committee here, to our residents out there, that I'm not going to go either by it through the memo tonight. It's there for your consumption. And for the committee, I want to remind you of how we found ourselves at this place, talking about school choice. In terms of my participation in these conversations with you, last spring, when we had the school choice hearing, the question was bought, and we voted to close school choice. The question was bought up about, have you done an analysis of school choice? Of which we said, we will provide that analysis for you in the next year. So here we are, the next year. The school choice hearing is in two weeks, giving our community an opportunity to participate if they so choose. And what I'm presenting to you tonight in the recommendations is really a two-part recommendation. A recommendation either to close that area of school choice, and the recommendation to consider. I want you to understand, by using the term "consider," I'm not saying to you, I'm telling you to open it. We need you to open it. I'm just saying, these are the areas that you should consider, debate, ask questions about. And so tonight is a chance to put important questions out there for the purpose of, when the presentation and the public hearing is done in two weeks, we can fulfill the answers to those questions that arise. Okay? So in that way, what I've done is I've taken the final page of that memo where you see those tables, and all I've done, this isn't any new material. This is just simply the... It's simply disaggregating that back page of the memo into slides so we can project it and talk about it. So you have it there. You can look at it on your screens as well. When looking at school of choice, we are, in the state of Massachusetts, by Massachusetts general law, a school of choice district. Every district is. We have to make a decision if we're not going to be school of choice. So that's why you're required to conduct a hearing prior to June 1. I believe in the previous meeting I said May 1. It's June 1 of every year, which we got that notice from the department today to ensure that we have that submission to them on or before June 1. So in that way, school of choice is something that we do unless we decide not to. When you bring a school choice student in, you have that student for the duration of their education. And that student also comes with $5,000 from a sending district. So any students who live in Neshoba that go out, we have to pay that $5,000, and any special education services that are billed back to us as a result of whatever specialized programming that student requires as part of the IEP process. So in that way, it works both ways. When you vote to close school choice, you're not voting kids going out. They get that choice no matter what. It's about students coming in. So when we look at that, let's think about, well, when would we consider school of choice? And what I would say to the committee is, in the early grades, kindergarten, first, and second, that is a time when, A, our numbers change year over year, can change dramatically, because sometimes people do private K, then come to first grade, or, you know, vice versa, or we find out the complexity of need, and the grade shifts and changes. So K1, 2 is a time that I think we have to protect in our school system, and that is a time that I wouldn't recommend a school of choice. So really, when we look at this, we look at it across grades 3 to 12, from my perspective. So in doing so, I want to just put up some data here for you. These are the tuition in and tuition out over time. And you can see that over the last four years, the tuition students have been decreasing because we voted to opt out of school of choice in 2012, 2013, and we only have a couple of classes left that are in school of choice. I think they're currently sophomores, our last class that was voted in. And then you can see the cost of students that are school choiced out, and then that's a headcount. And the reason why there's partials is because there's, it's partial connected programming. So if you see, for instance, in FY '22, $514,000, you think, well, $5,000 per student. Well, that $5,000 per student really comes out in the 3.5 range. So you think, what's the gap between $5,000 per student at $320,000 to this $514,000? Those are the additional costs that are billed back to us for students that require services. So there was this question about, are we on the hook to provide those services? This even illustrates that, no, the sending district is required to participate in that. I have my ace in the hole in case I trip up on any of my words tonight, so thank you, Jim, for being here. But it just illustrates that point. So you can see, in terms of how budgets have been crafted over the last four years, we were close to a level. We were 75 in a deficit in FY '19, and that deficit has grown to 359 since that year, the in versus out in the budget. And of course, we don't have a response from DESI. These are the figures we get directly back from them as they oversee that process. So when looking at class-side standards, my recommendation is built upon our class standards of being 22 to 1 at K to 2, but I've already said to you, I'd recommend we not even consider K1 and 2. And at grades 3 to 12, it's 24 to 1. But when considering that, considering school choice, I would make the number 22 to 1, because you need to have a margin in there that's enough that, in the event that you have some families move into town, you don't want to cross over the 24 threshold. have some families move into town, you don't want to cross over the 24 threshold that would then require you to staff another teacher to the school system. So by making the school of choice standard, a standard of 22 at grades three to 12, it gives you a margin of six to eight students per school, per grade level in terms of year in, year out, changes, move in, move out changes. And that's just a table that just sort of illustrates those things. So let's talk about this through the perspective of Bolton and Florence Sawyer. As we said, K 1 and 2 we had closed, and that's why they're colored red here. For the third grade, this is a projected enrollment number for next year that's based upon what we see in historical changes, and also have we been notified of any families that have, have left, that are intending to leave because they're moving out of state or something. And you can see that number of 94 of four sections is above the 22 student threshold. So having four, four sections in 22 students per section is a limit of 88, 94 is above that limit. At fourth grade, there are three sections that we have budgeted for. The cap for three sections would be 66 students, thus making 70 the limit there, over the limit. Now, that's still under our 24 to 1 class ratio limit. So we're maintaining under our class ratios, but this particular class, as you can see, is three students away from crossing into that threshold of considering another section. And when we do that, we say we consider that at the opening of school, not, we don't add a teacher, say, in October if we gain students because we've already started the school year, we're in the functional school year, we would look to support in other ways. So when you look at grade five, we have four sections at, excuse me, we have four sections at grade five, the limit is 88, the current enrollment there is 81, thus the availability to reach the ceiling of 88 is seven students. When you do the same thing for sixth grade, it's nine students, same thing for seventh grade, 14, same thing for eighth grade, closed. Why? We're above the cap of 88 at 93 students, and it would take a trigger of 97 students to move into a, a fifth section, so we would keep that there. So in looking at then, the town of Stowe, the same effect, and I think we understand the model there, and we look at the middle school level, you can see it, here's the cap of 88, in the middle school, here's what's different. We don't have three sections even when this number of 65 students would require really three teachers by our class size standards. However, in the middle school, our model is to teach in the subject matter areas of ELA, math, science, social studies, and then those student cohorts rotate through those four classrooms in their daily schedule. So we have to maintain four classrooms at the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade level. And you can see, our forecast for sixth grade next year at Stowe is only 65 students. We could go as high as 88 because there are four sections of teachers, and that would maintain us under 22 per class. You can see, so that's a big number. 23 students could be added to the sixth grade at Stowe without having to add an additional teacher to the school. They could be added within our class side standards. You can see, the 85 is painted yellow because I illustrated if you're within four, you're sort of in that danger zone, but it's not closed, right? And then of course, eighth grade, you see 14. Looking at, at Lancaster, Lancaster presents a scenario of the floor now, as I've talked about that ceiling number, I want to talk about the floor. Again, you would see K 1, 2 is closed. Then you look at grade three, ah, there's only 74 students there, and we have four sections. Shouldn't the cap actually be 88 if we have four sections? Well, just like we want to have a protective margin on the ceiling, we want to have that on the floor as well, because in the event two students were to move out and we needed to reduce those sections from four sections to three sections according to our standards, we would be able to do that. But if we added school of choice students when we're that close to the floor, it removes that option possibility in the future. So we got to watch that floor carefully as well. And that's the same case for, oops, you can see at grade four, they're right at 72 students right now, and I would not be comfortable going to three sections on 72 students because it just takes one student to change. That's already there, it's in the budget, so we would maintain that. So you can see in Lancaster, all the elementary grades I would recommend to be closed, as well as the sixth grade, with space available in the seventh and eighth grade. So when I talk about the high school, last year, we had 888 students in our high school, and our current staffing level is level to that, so we know we can service 880 students. So by forecasting and managing our numbers in such a way that we're 220 students per grade level, we're maintaining it at that 880 level, right? So that means we're not falling into risk of bringing in students that would cause us to then hire additional staff, which then offsets the cost and the benefit of bringing in school choice students. So in this way, high school would be the recommended standard of not exceeding 220 students, and that would be the space available based off of that standard. Now here's where, I tried to explain this in the memo, I wrote it four different ways and had a couple of people check it, and I wasn't even quite sure if I got it the way I intended it then. This is the aggregate of the whole system, so when you look at the aggregate and you total up just availability, my recommendation is not that you open it to this level, I'm just showing you what the potential is if it's maxed out to the limits in all sectors, is there a bestase for 115 students across grades five through 12, of which Florence Sawyer is the only fifth grade in that scenario. So we look at district wide enrollment to understand the size of our cohorts, and you can see in ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade, looking back to our cohort of eight, and we see 236 students are going to be moving into ninth grade. Kirk, you can't have 200, there's no room for students. Well, we average year over year, 40 to 50 students leaving us after eighth grade, going into ninth grade to go to vocational school, to go to charter school, or to go to private school. This is a number that actually has been growing over the last four years. So when we look at a five-year rolling average of it, the five-year rolling average comes out to 40 students, which is why in the, in the memo I recommended, if we manage the lower levels at 260 students, it's reasonable to expect at the high school, they would round out to 220 students once, you know, that transition from eighth and ninth grade happens. There's a lot of variables in there that I would be free to acknowledge. We have the variables of, in Lancaster, we've just recently passed some zoning articles that in a few years will bring more residents, more students to our school system. We also, you know, fingers crossed, with the advent of a new high school coming our way, will be very attractive to our students, including students that currently attend private school and vocational schools, may elect to return to our school system, or elect not to go to begin with, recognize that as well. So with that, we think about, well, when are those moments? We know we're not coming into a new high school, best case scenario right now is fall of 2027. And in terms of permitting for the Lancaster project, we're somewhere, and correct me, Lancaster reps, if I'm wrong, it, it, the estimates are somewhere around an 18-month process before we even get to the permitting phase, let alone shovel in the ground. Please don't quote me on that, I, I, I just remembered that being discussed in conversation, but it was a couple of months ago, so that time maybe has crunched. So we would be looking at district wide enrollment as well when discussing school of choice because they aggregate together at the high school, and that would have to be managed. Does that make sense? So in that way, the recommendation is, here's just written out in words, but it's basically outlined here. The recommendation is certainly school closed, school of choice, K through 5 at Center and MRE, with Hale opening, Luther Burbank at seventh and eighth grade, Florence Sawyer at fifth, sixth, and seventh grade, and then our high school. You can see, for instance, our projected enrollment, we don't know this yet, at, at New Shobwa Regional High School next year, we project to be about 219, so really, we would only be able to bring one student into that. The, the high school's able to absorb that differently because of the nature of how high schools are designed and, and your selection of courses. So that just sort of presents to you the data of, of potential there. So I would encourage you to dive into that memo, I encourage our community to do that, and we'll have a, a hearing on this in two weeks, and with that, I'll solicit any questions that folks may have, and for either answering now, but also for preparing for the hearing in a couple of weeks.
So there's going to be time to deliberate in two weeks, but if you guys have some clarifying questions right now, or anything that you would like to put on the table that you think is relevant for the community to consider, definitely do that. Go ahead, Scott.
So a lot of this seems to revolve around specific class size targets that you're trying to achieve. Now, I've done research on class size, most of it seems to be inconclusive, except maybe at lower grade levels. I'm wondering, did the school committee at some point in time decide on what appeared to be fairly strict and fixed targets for class sizes?
In 2010, there was a motion passed, 2010 I believe it was, and it was around the question of school choice, and at the time, the school choice limits were put at 22 and In other words-
The ratios?
The ratios at 22 and 24 in 2010. My recommendation is to lower that from 22 and 24 to 20 and 22, but actually, the 20 doesn't even apply because I'm not recommending that K 1 and 2 be opened.
So it's not a policy, it's not enshrined in law, it's really just a practice that we've always observed, and I think that Kirk is using that as a benchmark for this analysis.
Is that something we can or should discuss in June when we're talking about budgets and goals going forward?
So it's a little, it, it moves toward operational, however, it's something that we certainly discuss and debate, I mean, if you're, if you're trying to say that you wish class sizes would be lower, there's a price tag on that, so that triggers budget conversation, so that's certainly within our purview.
Yeah, I don't want to get into it now, like I said, that seems like the kind of thing you talk about when you start planning for the future, but I definitely think it's a worthwhile conversation in the June timeframe.
Sure. We can do that. Come on, Ray.
I think something else that I'd be interested in reading the information on before really being able to make a decision on this would be all of the other student to teacher ratios that exist in schools, not just that, that math and writing and reading teacher, there's the special ed teachers, and it's like, what's, what's that ratio, the specialist ratio?
The counselors?
Counselors, PT, OT, all of those other teachers would factor into this as well.
Yeah, I think I can answer that one pretty cleanly at the moment. So if we look at this here, there'd be no factor in the elementary schools. At the middle school, there'd be a potential factor of, you know, bring that up to 260 students, that stays right there where our ratios are, ratios are for administrators and guidance and our deans as presented, we present ratios of 250, it's right there, there are reasonable approximations of 250. In terms of special education, that is not something that we frankly could project. And so as we look at those ratios, those are all based off of qualifications of students according to criteria of those evaluations and decisions made in a team setting. So I wouldn't be able to provide that or put that out there in a reasonable way that would inform you in terms of that decision.
However, if a child were to come in whose IEP requires a one-to-one, that is something that the sending district would not have to reimburse for, but that we would have to hire.
Yeah. Oh, no, they, they would reimburse, those are billable services back there.
Isn't, isn't that under the threshold because it would be a paraprofessional who's under the number?
No, the threshold through circuit breaker is different than the threshold around school choice and the hours that are calculated on the service delivery grid, it's, it's kind of two different calculations.
And so would, in my example, would a one-to-one support specialist be charged back to the sending district?
I, I can't say it's one for one dollars, if that's what you're asking me, it has a calculation that Desi puts out for school choice, so I couldn't say to you that would be the exact salary of kind of someone.
If you could provide us with a couple of scenarios of potential situations, I think that that would help.
So you can look at this chart of the 60, approximately 65 students that are out as that comes to $325,000 in terms of, of the $5,000 limit, that $190,000 are those billable services that you're talking about, that we're paying out to other school systems right now because they invoice us for those services.
I guess what I'm, what I'm wondering though is what the delta is. So the school system that has received our children is paying X, we are giving them Y, what is X minus Y equal? Is I think my question.
Yeah, we can find some exemplars to that.
Any other questions at this point? Any clarifying questions?
So Lancaster has at least three different, unique housing projects that could spring up in the next couple of years, beyond just that one big one that you know about, there's at least two others.
Yep.
And they're significant, so there could be potentially a lot more kids, we think, coming into Lancaster. I'm also more concerned about that number of students choicing out rising, that seems like something we need to address, get a handle on, and figure out how to keep those kids here. That's, that's, that's a very worrying number to me.
We agree.
Is that number predominantly private school, or is it a pretty even breakdown?
No, no, you can't school of choice to a private school.
Oh, so it's, so it's only the-
Yeah.
So it's just the char school, this is all char school?
It is, the predominant reason for that are folks that live in our towns, that are educators that work in school systems and take their children with them, that's the biggest bucket, the biggest town that we pay out, the town that we pay the most dollars to in school of choice out is Clinton.
Clinton?
Clinton.
But can I just follow up on your question to clarify that 64.8 students, that does include parents who send their children to private school too?
Nope.
That's what I'm wondering, yes.
It does not include, you can't, you can't, private school's not an option, you've just made a decision to go to private or charter, that's not included.
I think you may have misunderstood because you referenced private schools before when you were talking about choice, reasons why students leave.
No, that was about why numbers reduce at the high school from eighth grade to ninth grade, they choose to go out at that time, so we know our enrollment drops by about four.
Do you mean it has nothing to do with Minuteman?
No money goes to Minuteman, that's all from the town.
Oh, right.
But, but, but the enrollment drop from eighth to ninth grade is impacted significantly by Minuteman.
But the assessments to the towns by Minuteman have an impact on the town's ability to spend on our district's budget, which is real, so they are related. And I think to follow up on Brett's point, I think my concern with opening up school choice is that we would be placing a greater burden on our district instead of keeping the focus on how to retain, on, on- on how to retain, on keeping students in the district.
I don't see those as competing agendas. I think you can do both.
How does opening school of choice put a greater burden on our district if merely optimizes the use of our existing district resources?
I think that it might, I guess I'm concerned that it might add greater workload than already exists to the teachers, and that one reason why this is, this is just, I'm putting it out there, I don't have any proof behind this, but one reason why people might be making a choice to leave the district is because, because they feel like the system is not delivering, is not meeting their expectations in one way or another. So, if we're adding more students into the mix, that just might make the problem worse.
So, historical, and I can bring it out in terms of a student enrollment analysis, the historical charts over time, going all the way back to 2001, shows that just the opposite. People aren't leaving our district, they're coming to it. We increase in enrollment over the years going grades K to seven. We lose them at the nine. I'll be happy to provide that enrollment data.
But if we're losing them at eight to nine, we're still losing them?
Yep.
So, does the number increase the same? Same, 64.8? Is that, it looks like it's going up.
That's a net out, isn't it?
It's a net out on school of choice, it sure is.
So, meaning, so more kids are leaving, regardless of when they're leaving, the number's climbing?
In terms of school choice, yes.
Yeah, so I agree. I think, I agree with Brett very much so. I think that it is folly for a district not to invest some hours, some woman or man hours, into why kids are leaving. And I actually, I don't know what this means, but I'm surprised you just said Clinton.
Yeah, I'm surprised too.
For whatever reason, take or leave my, whatever context you think that sits in. I guess I'm surprised. And I know a lot of teachers live in our three towns, so to make up for six, so I just think that we need some understanding of why the kids are leaving through school choice. We know why they're going to Minuteman, or at least we think we do, we probably don't. We think we know why they're leaving now. We think we know why kids are going to private school. I want to know why every single kid leaves. Every single one. And, you know, how we develop that system, I think, is akin to this conversation because I know we're not really deliberating right now, but this has never really been something that I'm in favor of, so I'm much more interested in keeping the kids who live in our towns educated in our towns. And that means not in Lexington, but in Bolton.
I just want to reiterate the point. They're not competing agendas. There are two separate questions. They're independent. Yes to both, yes in both. Yes, school of choice, opening school of choice can bring optimizing space and resources and retaining students, so if they don't choose school of choice, can do that. It's both. It's not a either or.
Okay, Scott first?
Well, Kirk just kind of jumped in front of me because I was about to say, these are two different issues, right? Yes, it's important for us to know and understand why students are school choicing out. However, at the same time, by not allowing school of choice in, we're missing out on revenue.
That's, I think, where my criticism sits. Is that I don't actually know that it's revenue positive. I know that the dollars come in, but I also know that school choice has unintended costs associated with it. And sometimes the costs are not financial.
So, with converting specialists to coaching roles, I feel like our specialists and our IAs are overworked, understaffed, and probably underpaid. And I don't know that adding more students to that caseload is the way to go. Being a parent of two kids with special needs, taking away, potentially taking away that support system for them worries me. So, again, that number of 64.8, that's scary? Because that's trending in a bad direction.
Can you explain to me what you mean by taking away?
Well, so they're already overworked. I don't think you could find a parent that has special needs kids who'll say that they're getting 100% of what's due to them. I just, I don't think you'll find many families that'll agree that they're getting 100% of what they should be getting for services because our schools are understaffed, right? So, you have, on any given day, how many teachers that are absent? Well, those rooms have to be filled with somebody. So, now you're pulling a specialist or an IA away from what they're supposed to be doing to cover a math class, or a gym class, or a music class, so they have an adult in the room. Meantime, while you're doing that, the student that should be getting services from that IA or from that specialist are now not getting the services.
I'm just, I guess what I'm asking for clarifications, Mr. Collins, is say, let me pull this one up. When talking about the sections and the standards, knowing sections don't change, it's optimizing where the space is available. So, for instance, in Lancaster, the space would only be available in grade seven and eight. I guess I'm just looking for clarity.
So, eighth grade, you have, say, you have 19 open spots.
Right.
Guarantee you, if you were to take an honest look at what you have for staffing in eighth grade, it's not enough, even though you say you have 19 open spots.
But when we look here, and we have five classrooms with 69 students, we actually have classroom size there of 13 and 14 per classroom, which is frankly embarrassingly rich in terms of class size standards. I've never heard of class sizes actually that low.
Brett, can I ask you, I wonder if this is what you're inquiring about? So, if out of the 19 kids who were, it might come in in eighth grade, let's say that seven of them have IPs who require some kind of specialized service. So, then you have your special education teachers are having to service, you know, those children. And so, it's not just about the classroom teacher. It's about the special education teacher who is going to have to bring however many kids into each section of their pull-out or of their reading intervention classroom or what have you. So, I think that, is that what you're really concerned about?
Are they? So, here's what I would also suggest to the entire group. If in considering school of choice, I would not recommend to the committee at any point to say, open it wide open and try to get to the ceiling as fast as you can. I don't think that'd be a responsible way to do that. If you wanted to do it, you could say, we're only opening up 12th grade. Or, we're only opening up five spots at the Hale Middle School, sixth grade. You can be that targeted in your decision-making. The law allows for that. So, it doesn't have to be opened up to, like, full capacity. This table here just illustrates what maximum scenario would look like if maximum scenario were ever reached under the current numbers.
Okay, so a couple more clarifying questions?
I'm not all that familiar with the nuances of school choice. Does it impact us within the district that if we open it up, it would let parents move from school to school within the district?
It doesn't necessarily, but that's a-
Opening up school of choice give them the ability to try to cherry pick what they want from a middle school?
It would, well, A, it would- A policy, we would have to examine our voice.
Oh, no, it does not activate that.
It does not activate that.
Oh, yeah, so my question was also about what Brett-
Any interviews, exit interviews with students?
Perhaps if there are things we can do even better than we're already doing, I think we should try to do them. Any other clarifying questions on school choice? Let's go down the line. Scott, one more.
I'm just, I was just gonna say, I'm a little concerned about the nature of people, concerned about the nature of people choice. I get the impression Kirk is more in favor of school choice. That's my own personal bias as well, and so I just like to hear more of the arguments, fact-based arguments around why it's good and why it's not good.
So, I can tell you, my comment earlier has to do with not necessarily the fiscal implication, but the cultural implication. And so, bringing in 23 students, I know you're not saying we should do this, but in Hale, for example, there are 23 seats available in the sixth grade. There are currently 65 children. So, if you were to basically take and add a third to that grade, those children being from all different places and needing to be kind of culturally included and kind of brought into the fold, that's, and I would argue as a teacher, that's a heavy lift on a sixth grade team to integrate 23 children who are not from the town, who don't know anyone, arguably, in building social, emotional supports for all of those kids. And so, that can be done by the very strong team that I know existed Hale, but that they're going to have to expend to try to great that large number. Obviously, we might cap it at 5, 10. Wouldn't do that, you wouldn't necessarily agree to that, but-
I, for me, I think the two issues do go hand-in-hand. Serving, and I just think it would be good information for us to have as a school.
So, guys, just keeping my eye on the clock, I wonder if there's any other clarifying question you have so that when we come back to deliberate this in two weeks, hearing, then deliberation in the meeting, if you want Kirk to bring to us anything else. And obviously, if something occurs to you late tonight, just shoot an email to me.
Got it. No, this has nothing to do with the numbers here, but I'm just saying this for purposes of saying it to those who are watching. The information the superintendent has presented tonight has obviously prompted some spirited debate this evening. So, in that regard, the public needs to understand that they have an opportunity at the next meeting, we're doing the next meeting? Next meeting, to come in and have their opinions known at that point, and at which point we will then go into deliberation after the public hearing is closed to vote on the- So, just to be clear, this will be your recommendation at the-
Yeah, I want to be clear to the committee about this because as Mr. Powell alluded to it, I'm not saying anything other than providing you, this is the lever that you asked me to bring forward to you last year to say, what is our potential on school of choice? So, I presented to you that. That's what that is. So, I would say where I would recommend is the closings. This is where you just should not consider it at all. But the other areas are up for your consideration and debate. And you can think about that in terms of caps and limits, any construction that you want.
Please note that the hearing is going to be held in the virtual environment, and that Zoom link will be made available to the public for the hearing.
Can you remind us, are we taking a vote after the hearing on the same day?
We will deliberate after the public hearing in the meeting and vote at the next meeting.
And so, we'll, so, we'll be voting on specific numbers per class, per school? Like, that's where we're going to be deliberating on, right?
So, what we all put out there is exempted, so what we have to do is, you have to take a motion and vote on the question to close school choice. And so, I've outlined in the memo where I'm recommending you close school choice. You can elect as a committee to close more than what I've recommended in that memo. Does that make sense? Because that's what we, that's the function that we have to do. We have to vote to close it. Otherwise, if you don't vote to close it, it's assumed you're full open for school choice.
With no caps?
With no caps, you're just full open on school choice, yeah. Well, I mean, the school district, you know, you're open for school choice. You then have to address those questions as they come in. But just because you're open for school choice also doesn't necessarily say you have to take any student that applies for school choice. You have to have criteria in that case, but that's where it gets complex.
Can you get, make sure that we are completely clear on what the motion should be? And if the motion needs to delineate the different-
It does.
Caps at the, okay, that's a complex motion, so.
Yeah, that's what I was-
However-
Or could we do two separate motions? Could we decide the limitations at a later meeting?
That's what I was about to recommend, is you can build a construct around that.
Okay, the motion can say, with limitations to be determined before June 1st. So, I don't know, like, I just want-
Yeah, I'll look into it, we'll see what kind of template to craft that official motion.
Okay, any other, yeah, all right, guys. That was, that part of the superintendent's report. Well done.
We knew that, we knew that was going to be-
Yeah, so maybe it'll be super short next time. Probably not. Now, we're gonna move on to the next part of the superintendent's report, which is, I believe, Renaissance learning?
Yeah, I'd like to introduce our assistant superintendent, Laura Friend. She has a presentation for you on Renaissance learning. I'd like to remind the committee, this is the data platform that we adopted this year in grades K to eight to look at math and reading. We are in our first year. So, it's like, we're going through the trials and tribulations and struggles and trips and learning curves that you would expect in the first year of diving into anything. But Laura Friend and her team have done a great job. I'd like to now turn it over to assistant superintendent, Friend.
Thank you, Superintendent. You stole my thunder.
Pardon me?
Yeah, as is often the case, but I did, I just want to reiterate, we're still learning and growing and building capacity this year with our understanding of Renaissance learning. And with anything new, there are some bumps in learning curves and potential implementation hiccups, if you will. So, I share the information with you with a caveat in knowing that we're still learning and growing and building our capacity. And our teachers are doing a really tremendous job on not only implementing the tool, which is probably the easy part. It's, we have the data now, what are we going to do with it? And so, we're learning and growing. The goal of truly implementing a multi-tiered system of support next year, focusing on really targeted instruction and those tier-two interventions. So, that's the purpose of our, the implementation of our universal screeners to build that capacity for the next step. So, I would like to just thank our Department of Teaching and Learning. I think I was negligent of sitting here thinking about that I didn't thank Laura Cagington and Courtney Philbin and Karen Bovare for all of their hard work, not only with the March 17th PD Day, but with helping with the launch of Renaissance learning and helping supporting teachers and using up the tool, taking a look at the data and the reports, progress monitoring tools that are associated with the data, and then some of the intervention tools that are also associated with the platform. So, thank you to them, in addition to our awesome teachers. So, the presentation this evening is a high-level presentation. It's really going to focus on two purposes. One is just to provide an overview of the growth data that we've seen using Star Math and Star Reading from the fall to the winter with a potential projection to the end of the year. And then, I think, probably the more exciting part exciting part is the sampling of the reports that our teachers have access to, that can help inform and target their instruction based on student need, whether that's students who are in need of extra instruction, or students maybe who are ready for acceleration or enrichment. So, this has been the theme. All of the work and efforts that we have engaged in this year continue to be tightly connected to our strategic plan. And so, we've articulated the connection for implementation of Renaissance learning to our strategic plan here for you with the associated action steps and our look ahead to next year with that multi-tiered system of support approach. You know, I've said this here, this is one of our core values. And so, we, our core values want to ensure that all of our students feel as if they belong, and that we're developing the strengths and talents and interests of all of our students. And we also value academic achievement and growth for our students. So, as I had mentioned, the presentation here is focused on two purposes. It's one, to provide a high-level overview of student growth from the fall to the winter. We'll have another assessment window coming up here in May for spring assessment. And in the second half of it, I'll show you some examples of student, student reports and teacher reports that our teachers can use and are using to help inform next steps. So, as a means of overview for this slide, it's gonna, it sounds familiar to student growth percentage for MCAS. So, STAR assessments measure the SGP or student growth. My students have taken more than one assessment in a given year. And the growth can be categorized as low growth, typical growth, or high growth. The data is norm-referenced and compares the student's growth to expected growth from a like cohort of peers nationally. The SGP ranges from an SGP of 1 to 99. For example, an SGP of 70, which would be reflective of high growth, means that that student's growth from one test window to another test window nationally was greater than 70% of students nationwide. So, again, this is just some high-level numbers at a glance, relative to our student growth percentile here at Yeshulga from fall to winter, knowing that the fall window was our first go district-wide at administering the assessment. So, 70.1% of our students scored at or above typical growth, and 67.9% in reading, grades 2 through 8, scored at or typical growth.
Really quick, does that mean a number greater than 50?
STAR identifies, you can see in the bottom right-hand corner, at our typical growth is defined by that window here. Typical growth is that band between 35 to 65. We shoot for a 50% SGP, but the band is, is pretty wide, and it's something that we factor in while we're taking a look at the data. So, this chart here, and I just wanted to make, make a note, and I made a note in my notes here. It's important to note that while our goal is continual growth for students wherever they demonstrate proficiency, it's important for us to remember that students who have already attained high levels of proficiency, they already know, their growth percentile may be lower because they've already demonstrated high proficiency. Our continual goal is growth for all of our students, no matter where they are in the continuum, but that growth percentile may be lower for our students who have already demonstrated at or above proficiency. So, this chart shows growth by grade level and grade span from 1 to 8 in reading. And as a reminder, we've administered STAR reading in grades 1 through 8. I'm gonna talk about STAR Early Literacy in a minute. And for math, we've administered it in grades 1 through 9. This chart reflects STAR reading by grade level and grade span, grades 1 through 5 and grades 6 through 8. So, you can see that our elementary grades here show stronger student learning growth than our middle-level grades, which is what we would want, with 72% of our students falling in the average or high-growth category in grade 1 through 5, compared to 63% at the middle level, grades 6 through 8. Grade 4 here showed the most growth overall, and grade 2 showed the most students falling in the high-growth category with grades 3 and 4 right behind. This chart here shows the median student growth percentile scores by grade and by school. And I'd like to elucidate a couple points here as it relates to this slide, and also point you to the hyperlink in the bottom right-hand corner if you're interested and you have time and you wanted to see what some sample questions look like. I've included that hyperlink for STAR Early Literacy, STAR Reading, and STAR Math, if you wanted to take a look and see what they look like. Remember that the assessment is adaptive, so based on how the student is answering the questions, whether they're correct, the assessment will increase in complexity or decrease in complexity based on the student's responses. Our students are also growing, and their understanding of taking the assessment too. So, over time, it's going to be very interesting for us to see, again, our students' performance over time as our students become more familiar with it. So, you can see of note, the median growth scores of all of our K1 grades fell in the typical growth category. Also of note here, and this is something that we're going to work through in our assessment calendar, is that once students demonstrate readiness on STAR Early Literacy, they move on to the STAR Reading assessment. In some cases, we have students who have taken both the STAR Early Literacy assessment and the STAR Reading assessment, because our teachers are seeing that they're transitioning and then they move them on. So, we see some duplicity in students taking the assessment, particularly through grade 1, and in some cases through grade 2. The STAR Early Literacy assessment assesses students' foundational reading skills and early numeracy. So, STAR Early Literacy combines literacy and numeracy, which is different than STAR Reading and math, which separates the two domains. Something else to note. As well, our K1 and 2 students are also assessed with different curriculum-based measures, CBMs, which provide assessments of specific foundational literacy skills. For example, rapid automatic naming, oral reading fluency, to help further provide a picture of students' readiness for early literacy. So, this is just one piece of it. This chart reflects a similar kind of graphic as the STAR Early Literacy graphic, and this is reflective of STAR Reading. Again, students being administered STAR Reading in grades 1 through 8. I would say that the numbers of students taking STAR Reading in the majority for grade 1 is growing. So, we'll have more students taking the STAR Reading assessment in grade 1 this spring, because they've demonstrated readiness. Of note here is we have all of our students falling in the typical growth or high-growth category, median growth category, except for in one area in grade 6. And so, that provides us with information to continue the conversation.
That was a very hard song.
I had it on silent, I'm sorry. I don't know what happened.
Go ahead.
We have a similar chart here for our STAR Math. Grade spans very similar to the STAR Reading, grade spans by growth category. For example, here we see that 52% of our third graders demonstrated high growth, which is great, and 20 demonstrated growth on the lower end. Of note, when we take a look at this data, especially in light of two factors, is one, our math curriculum lead who's functioning as a math instructional coach district-wide, and our implementation of high-quality instructional materials in math, which is our Bridges in Math implementation. We're very pleased to see that almost half of the student SGPs fell in the high-growth range in grades 1 through 5. So, all but one grade level fell in that high-growth range. But, we're gonna continue to look at the data. Again, a similar chart here for math by grade level all the way up through grade 9. And again, seeing one pocket of growth area there, in need of one, one grade level falling in the lower growth SGP range, and that, again, is an opportunity for us to dig in further. We see high, high growth in grades 3 and 4, based on what I have just articulated, that we maybe begin to make an inference between and the correlation between the two. That's great to see. So, what do we do with the data? That's the important part, because we can assess and assess, and if we don't do anything with the data, the assessment doesn't do us any good. So, the universal screener, STAR Reading, STAR Math, STAR Early Literacy is intended to identify early identification in a proactive way. So, we're growing in our capacity as a district to work to build that foundation for multi-tiered system of support. MTSS is rooted in proactivity and prevention. The next step is organizing for targeted instruction. I'm gonna show you some examples of reports that our teachers are accessing and available. These are not the totality of the reports that are available. They're just some examples of reports that once an assessment is given, a teacher can pull out one of these reports and then be able to dig in. So, this is an example of, it's called a screening report. And this is available at the teacher level, at the grade level, and at the building level. And so, what we see here is that it provides a teacher or administrator, individual, to see if a student's score is above approaching or below proficiency, based on the STAR Reading proficiency levels. A teacher can drill down to find out why a student may not be approaching proficiency. For example, K1 and 2 students are assessed with those CBMs that I had measured so that the teacher could go ahead and take a look to see how the student performed on those CBMs to find out more. So, this is high-level screening. Next step. Okay, let me see. Who is attaining, achieving, exceeding, and maybe someone, a student or a group of students who may need some more targeted instruction? This is an example of a STAR, sample STAR growth report. This one is for math, and I'd like to make some notes here. The report shows growth proficiency categories, so you can see those right there on the left. SGP, that's the student growth percentile we were just talking about. The testing dates, testing duration, that is how long the student spent on a test, scaled score, percentile, and normal curve equivalent. So, of note here with this report, we like this report, is that a teacher can quickly see which students are meeting expectations. Note the colors. So, for example, you can see the second student listed here, who is demonstrating high growth and high proficiency, was first tested last June, and was partially meeting, and you can see the color code there with the yellow. The student now is meeting expectations in blue with the last assessment. So, again, just one data point. So, as a teacher, I would be looking at this information and saying, does the other assessment data that I have in my purview confirm this growth? Also of note, the third student is listed as low growth, high proficiency. So, one may say, oh, low growth, that's concerning. However, you will see that the student straight out of the gate was exceeding expectations, was in the green, but the last test, the student spent under 10 minutes. This gives the teacher really important information about that student's readiness. This is the last report for tonight in terms of sample. There are more. This is a STAR Instructional Planning report, and they're actually two combined here. It's two different reports here. One is for Early Literacy up at the top, and the second half, the bottom half of the screen is for STAR Reading. And you can see here that this report breaks down by domain skill and estimates the percentage of mastery of skills based on the STAR metrics in each domain for a student, providing teachers with information about areas of strength and growth. So, as a teacher, if I was looking at the top half of the screen and looking at the STAR Early Literacy, the question that I would have as a teacher is, what is the other assessment data I have to tell me about student's progression as it relates to phonological awareness, phonics, and word recognition, because those domain skills are lower? So, STAR also, and we're, we're watching this, and this is going to be interesting for us as we get our MCAS scores from the spring, this summer, and into the fall. They also project MCAS proficiency outcomes. And so, we've provided a slide for you here as a sample for math in grades 3, 4, and 5. On the pink shaded bar is the fall proficiency for, based on the fall assessment, how our students would perform in the spring MCAS based on how they performed in the fall. The blue and green bar, it reflects winter proficiency and how, based on the winter assessment, how our students would perform on MCAS. So, you can see here that the percent in, in exceeding expectations increased and doubled actually in 3rd and 5th grade from fall to the winter. And the percent of the grade in not meeting expectations decreased from fall to the winter. So, we're gonna take a look at this data, and this is, again, just a sample of the data. It's just 3 through 5 math, and see how well it correlates and aligns with the actual data that we receive after our students take the MCAS, and we have that information. That's interesting. So, here are our next steps. We're in the process right now of gathering faculty feedback about implementation this year and recommended areas for improvement from our teachers. Our teachers are telling us right now that they're feeling more comfortable, and they're beginning to, to truly begin to use those reports to help inform and target their instruction, but they're still learning and growing, and they still need support. As well, there are other tools that, as I had mentioned, complement STAR, including Freckle and Lalelo, which are tools, practice tools, intervention tools that are computer adaptive, that align with where the students have demonstrated proficiency. And our teachers are beginning to use those tools in a more targeted way. So, those are all areas in progress right now. We're going to continue to build our data analysis skills at all levels for the purpose of early identification of student need. We are also going to integrate the use of STAR Phonics. That was presented in, in the teaching and learning budget as a diagnostic assessment tool within our district assessment portfolio. So, we're going to be adding that as a diagnostic tool next year. We're going to leverage the use of our screeners to support and develop our implementation of our multi-tiered system of support. We're gonna incorporate the use of STAR assessment data within our developing instructional coaching models, step by step. And we also recognize the need of strengthening our communication with families about the data. We recognize that that's an area of need, and we're committed to strengthening our communication skills as it relates to speaking with families about the data, because we know our families want to know how their children are doing on all aspects of the assessment data that's available to us. So, these are all our areas of next steps as it relates to Renaissance learning and teaching and learning.
Thanks for our long-awaited presentation on Renaissance learning. Thank you. We're so grateful. So, everybody, I'm just keeping my eye on the clock, and I want to be respectful of your time as best I can be, and also honor that you might have questions for Laura. I'm hoping we can keep it to just a couple. Go ahead, Karen. Go ahead Karen.
And please maybe down the line questions, because I know it's in the beginning stages of implementation. But does Renaissance Learning have progress monitoring capacity? Or are you planning on using something different so that when we have that benchmark data, those kids that are in need of support are being regularly progress monitored?
It, it does. It also has star custom assessments. So, teachers, if they're working on a specific skill, they can select questions based on that skill or concept with a bank of questions, and then use that to create a customized assessment to use for progress monitoring.
And I'm assuming that piece probably hasn't started yet, you guys didn't benchmark this piece?
It's started, but it's a next step.
Sure. And then my other question is, how are the, and again, this might be for future. How are the teams, the support teams given a chance to connect on the data so that they can make adjustments to their groups, their instructional, you know, implementation? Is that, again, is that more coming later?
Let's get to the schedule for next year. So, we recognize that is a need, our teachers are doing the best they can.
Sure.
Next year, we will have built into the master schedule data team times, PLC times, every cycle for teachers and the coach and the specialist to be engaged in a conversation about looking at the data. This is one piece of data about looking at student work and other kinds of assessment data on a continual basis, proactively, so we can intervene with those tier-two interventions in a responsive way. And so, leveraging the tool as early identification in complement to the other assessment data will be a focus for those data team meetings and the PLC work that we're going to do as part of our multi-tiered system of support next year. But it will be built into the schedule.
Great, thank you.
If I can add to that, that's a key element where our coaches are going to play an incredibly important role. They're going to be the ones that facilitate any of that work.
And that work is happening at just the school level? Or are there being, are there conversations among the different schools about their, like, you know, because you could see different schools, you know, performing differently. Are they, are the teachers at the different schools having conversations about what's working and?
I would say not yet in terms of taking a look at that data collectively and horizontally. I can tell you that the building principals are. And teaching and learning is having those conversations with the building leaders.
My second question is, I know this was the first year, but are you planning to give that data to parents at the end of the year?
I.
This first year?
I would say that the data is intended to have a conversation with parents and not necessarily a report to hand to parents. Because I know as a parent, I have a lot of questions about what the numbers mean and all the different components. So, we're, we're going to work towards ensuring that our teachers have what they need to have informed conversations with families during parent-teacher conferences or perhaps during team parent times that are scheduled outside of the parent-teacher conferences or during, you know, potentially during an annual review. Again, as one piece of data in the larger assessment system, but yes, absolutely.
Lauren? This, the star reporting seems great, especially as they start to use it more. I was wondering about those additional tools, those targeted tools, Freckle and Lolilo. They're part of the star package, so they can just be used? And then, one other thing I had was, so back to me with Center School. Center School K through two, this kind of complements what I've been trying to communicate from, from parents. I know that, that reading's in the typical growth area, but it is the lower typical. Are these reports going to be looked at to kind of assess like need for more support?
So, I would say that it's, it's complicated because when we're talking about the growth data, and if you're already demonstrating a level of higher proficiency, the growth data may look lower. So, this is one piece of the data. Lower growth doesn't necessarily mean lower proficiency. So, I'm answering the question, but yes, I mean, we take a look at the data and then we have informed conversations about what, what's next. And our goal really is to help support teachers with that tier-two, the tier-two targeted instruction proactively instead of, and we're already doing a great job, and our teachers are already doing a great job. It's getting to the need at a system-wide level proactively sooner rather than waiting and needing, hypothetically, for that tier-three intervention. This shift reflects a system-wide lever shift of how we are approaching student need in even more proactive way right out of the gate. And by looking at data every week with the coaches, with the teams of teachers, every week with administrator support, the idea is that we're going to be able to more proactively meet student need. Not that we're waiting for students to struggle, but it, it's going to be a lever change and intended to be a proactive step.
And just one more thing on that. So, I know, I totally get the, if you're at a higher level, then your growth is going to be less, most likely. But you can get that level of detail to see if that's actually what's occurring in those grades by looking at, at like the screening report or other reports that are available.
You can. It's also complicated by our implementation because as I had mentioned, we have some, some students taking both star early literacy and star reading. So, we need to finesse, we need to fine tune that in our assessment calendar to be clearer because it compounds the data when you have students taking both assessments. And where a student may demonstrate higher proficiency, say, on star early literacy, but less so on star reading, and they're taking both assessments in the same window, the data isn't as clean.
So, what would happen is, is if you're, if you're a first grader who showed command in the early literacy assessments and you transitioned into the star reading assessment, you're not included in that distribution of students in that other assessment, therefore excuse it, right, in terms of the total profile. But we're not going to have students take assessments that they've demonstrated mastery of because we have a mantra of follow the student.
Okay, everybody, so maybe Scott, one more question, and then we'll wrap it up there.
I wasn't sure if your fifth bullet was alluding to this or not, but are you also using this?
Hold on, I have to see what the fifth bullet is.
Are you also using this as a tool to assess and train the teachers?
Fifth bullet, incorporate the use of star assessment data within our developing instructional coaching model? So, can you say the question again?
Are you using this?
Now that I found the fifth bullet.
Are you using this as a tool to assess and train the teachers as well?
Not to assess the teachers. Because it's, we're focusing on the student learning. But to target student need based on where the students are at. And we are working to help our teachers as we grow in taking a look at data and using data-informed targeted instruction even more so than we are. That will become part of our lexicon next year with what I had described about in our master schedule. So, we're focusing on student learning, not on assessing the teachers with star data.
Okay. So, we're going to leave it at that. And thank you so much for all of that. That was really informative and an amazing amount of work. We so appreciate it. Wow. I really want you to look at the voices in the Shoma booklet. That's the good stuff. Okay, I think this is important too. We have, our next item, guys, is to hear from Ms. Angelis about the People Personnel Services update. This is an annual presentation that has been built in to help us understand the work that the department is doing. And Joan, I do not want to say this twice, you know, torture you. You have an amazing presentation, I've looked through it, I can't wait to hear it. But time is of the essence, so let's rock and roll.
So, I'm going to just summarize, because I included the survey in your packet. And the part B of the post-high school outcomes, I have to provide at another time. And that's because Desi has recalled that information. They're asking us to wait to publicly share that because they've used a new company to collect the post outcome data. And they have some concerns. I gave you the pie charts, but not the data behind it in terms of the demographic information. I only gave you the pie charts, but they even had the wrong year on the data. So, they've asked us to kind of look at it internally, and I promise I will come back. Because I know a lot of the questions that the school committee had was, where are our special ed students now? Post-high school graduation. So, I promise I'll come back and give you that data once they give us the public permission to release that data of those students, okay? So, I provided you the survey and the results in your packet. And I'm not going to go through every single question, I'm going to just do some highlights. But just for people that weren't here last year, the IEP exit survey was created and piloted in the spring of 2022. We had many stakeholders that were involved in the development of the survey, including special ed teachers, school psychologists, team chairs, speech pathologists, occupational therapists, and physical therapists, along with our CPAC members. The working groups met often and made recommendations for question types and arrangements of questions. And we looked at a nationwide sampling of different surveys across the United States that were used in other districts. So, this year, we sent out surveys to parents and guardians of all the students who had initial annual and reevaluations at the start of the school year. A little bit disappointing that we've had a very small response rate. About 10% of parents have returned the survey to us despite us reminding parents to fill out our survey after IEP meetings. If you are watching the comment every week, I think I had it in there for months, please fill out the survey. Please give us feedback because we're always looking to improve our professional practice with parents' feedback and their experience through the IEP process. So, 10% of the surveys were returned. But despite that, there's still some data we can look at, even though it's a small sampling. Overwhelmingly, we received positive feedback in all areas with percentages favorable, agree or strongly agree between 91 and 97%. So, parents overwhelmingly gave positively responses across survey questions to include that their concerns were integrated into the team meeting, that the child's strengths and interests were discussed, that they felt they were an equal partner when developing the IEP, that the team showed a willingness to learn more about their child's needs, that they understood the reason why their child was referred for special education services, that the modifications and accommodations and services were discussed for the child. At the team meeting, we discussed specific programming for each child. That progress reports included data that parents understood the roles of each of the people at the team meetings and that our reports were presented in an understandable way. And they were written in terms that they understood, which I think is really important because we want parents to feel as equal partners when we're presenting information. So, when I looked at the data, I had a couple of wonderings that came across for me. There was a section that we asked about where the, regarding having, offering parents and meeting their needs in terms of offering an interpreter or scheduling meeting. So, 10% indicated that that was not an area that they felt that we had offered a scheduled meeting or an interpreter. So, even though that's a small number, it's an area I really want to further evaluate because I cross-referenced that question with, did we provide you an interpreter in the meeting if you needed one? And what came out was 4.3% of parents out of this 10 said we didn't offer them an interpreter. So, that was a little moment for me in time that said, how come? Because I think in this district, we do a really good job asking parents what their needs are and trying to meet their needs. We have a home language survey that we provide every parent at registration. We have them register in Power School, and we ask if they need an interpreter or translated documents. And then, in terms of sending out evaluations, we also ask about an evaluation consent, will you need an interpreter? So, there's three different ways in the district that we try to get at that data, and we still missed it somehow. So, I think I have to go back and dig into some of that data to figure out, did parents not tell us the need for an interpreter? I did look at one meeting invitation where parents asked for the documents to be translated, but didn't ask for an interpreter. So, I think why I mention this is, we want to make sure that parents can meaningfully participate in meetings. So, that's a wondering I have, and I want to go back and really think about that in terms of some of the data. I also have to, you know, say there were so many positive comments, and I'm not going to read all of them, but I want to share a few that were really highlighted pretty consistently. The specialists were very collaborative and eager to figure out solutions that were best for my child. The teachers took time to know my child and do a proper evaluation, which I'm really happy with. Our IEP meeting felt very collaborative, and the team worked so hard to have a plan to put my child's needs first, but incorporates everyone's perspective. So, those were some of the positive comments. Some, we also get some questions through the survey piece, which I think is really critical feedback because if one parent has a question, that means many parents might have a question. So, one of the questions that was asked in the survey is, what's the difference between the special educator's role in the classroom and the paraprofessionals? So, when we look at those questions, and I sit at a meeting with the team chairs and school psychologists, we actually, we dive into this information, talk about it to make sure that we are really clear when we're talking about how a special ed teacher is providing support in a classroom, what their role is. Could be a co-teaching role, could be a small group instructional role. And what are our paraprofessionals, and how are they supporting students? So, I think really talking about what that means on the service delivery grid is super important. And then, another parent indicated that they thought the evaluation process took a long time. So, really talking about those timelines that we have to meet. And I, it does feel like a long time when you have 30 school days to test a student and then 45 to have a meeting, and then we're sending out the IEP. So, that's, you know, a quarter of the school year. So, I think that we need to articulate when we're sending out those evaluation consents, what the timelines are so parents know what the expectations are around the laws. So, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have in particular about any of the question areas or any of the feedback.
All right. That was really great, thanks Joan.
That was really quick too, right? I'm, I'm, I'm under one minute.
Does anybody have any questions about this information? I mean, I think obviously you named it, the response number is low. So, how can we, I get, I don't know how we can be creative about getting more responses.
I've been using the comment as my forum to, to write in, to solicit that feedback. And the team chairs have been asking, and Mrs. Milton and Mrs. Dumas have sent out the surveys multiple times. We've sent it to both parents, not just one. I'm just wondering if people are a little on survey overload. We did a lot of that during the pandemic, so it makes me wonder. But if you have suggestions, I'm certainly open to.
What percentage of people responded?
10%.
10%.
Right. So, we sent out 687 surveys, and we had 64 returned to us. From September to this point, we have a lot of meetings between April and June that are coming, so we're hoping we'll get more.
And those 684 were both parents?
We're sending them to both.
So, you're going to?
Typically, one parent is. No. We send it to both parents, but typically, we're asking for one parent to return the survey.
My only thing was the question about the interpreter. I think mutually agreed upon scheduling time was another example provided in that question. So, it could be that too, because the times are kind of sent out and.
Right. And that, I agree, I just wanted to cross- I just wanted to cross-reference the question around the interpreter because it was 10%, and then the interpreter question was four. So I was cross-referencing those two to say, yes, maybe 6% of the parents felt like it wasn't a mutual agreeable time. But I was really thinking, we typically reschedule quite easily with parents and try to work with their schedule, so I'm not sure about that. But when I think about, you know, being sure that we have interpreters in meetings and parents can meaningfully interpret, I have to, that has to be for everybody, for all. And we've talked about equity and making sure that everybody can participate is really important. So that's, I think, for me, why I highlighted that area. All right, everybody?
Can I just make one comment?
Of course.
You soliciting suggestions, so I'm going to make a suggestion.
Please do.
Do not kick yourself over this translator issue because I think that, you know, for someone who works with people of different cultures and different languages, the issue of, do you need interpretive services? Is a really slippery slope. I see that a lot in my career, my profession, excuse me. And there's a lot of times where clients who speak a different language, who, yeah, yeah, who'll say, you know, do you need to have an interpreter? No, I'm good. And then after the fact, it's like, oh, I really could have used an interpreter. So do not kick yourselves, please, Ms. DeAngelis.
It's not that we're kicking ourselves, but when I think of that issue of equity and participation in families and being really clear about the work we're doing through the IEP process, I'm committed to doing it very transparently, making sure everyone can participate. So I appreciate that. Thanks, Jo. All right, everybody. We're going to move on to our next item on the agenda, and that is new business. The remainder of the agenda is relatively concise and short. Will, can I just get a thumbs up from everybody if you're able to give me about 20 more minutes? If Lita says yes, then we're in. All right, so new business. We're going to turn, I'm going to turn this over to Attorney Lee Sin to discuss with us and take a vote on, if you're amenable to it, everyone, new members of the school building committee.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm happy to report that we had three vacancies on our building committee. And what we have done in the past is we've always tried to fill vacancies with like-kind replacements. So if the president is from Bolton and they bring a certain skill level, we want to fill that position with somebody from Bolton with a certain skill level. So I'm happy to report this evening that we have two of our three vacancies ready to fill tonight. And I got a call from the superintendent today that a third individual has stepped up and is willing to round out our committee. And just as an aside, when we first started this work, I had thought, from a personal standpoint, that having 14 to 15 members on the committee might be a little bit unwieldy. To the contrary, it's proven to be very, quite productive. And actually, given the amount, we're almost third year of this now, having 15 people is very helpful because we, a couple of times, we've had, been very close to not having a quorum. So I'm very happy, Madam Chairman, to move this evening that the district committee approved the recommendation of the school building committee to approve former district committee representative Richard Echol of Stowe and Mr. David Yesway of Bolton as voting members of the school building committee.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
Can I just ask who they're replacing? Like who?
Yes. Mr. Echol is replacing Attorney Hartnagle from Stowe. And Mr. Yesway is replacing Mr. Gibson from Bolton. Mr. Gibson came to our committee with some logistical manufacturing experience. And Attorney Hartnagle is, as I stated, an attorney. So he had legal experience. Mr. Echol brings a significant amount of technical experience. He has a lot of IT experience, and he'll be very helpful providing that input as we move on with this Stowe project.
Mr. Echol, also former chair of the Stowe FinCon?
I don't know if he was chairman, he was on the FinCon.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? unanimous. Thank you, everyone, and thank you, Jo, for bringing it on to us. I imagine the third one will come to us next time.
Yes.
Okay.
He hasn't been introduced to the school building committee.
Okay, so let's move on to our next matter of new business, and that's the DECA donation acceptance. And I think we turn to Laura for this again?
We do. Special appearance by Laura.
So as you know, our DECA students, many of them will be attending the national strip. And so we're very pleased to solicit your approval for a donation recently made by Murphy Insurance Agency to the DECA chapter at Neshoba. The funds received from this donation will be used on travel expenses for students attending the national strip. We know this is a costly trip, and we tend to pay the cost to attend for students with this donation. So for your consideration, we would like to present for approval a $2,500 donation from Murphy Insurance Agency. Now, this is the fourth year in a row that Murphy Insurance Agency has sponsored our DECA program, and we thank them for this generous donation and for their support. Thank you for your consideration of the donation.
Great. Thanks, Laura. I'll take a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I've moved to accept the donation from Murphy Insurance in the amount of $2,500 to be used on travel expenses for students attending the national strip.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Just celebration of our DECA crew. Go DECA! All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Murphy Insurance. All right, everyone, cruising right along here to unfinished business. And I'd like to turn to our budget and warrant subcommittee members who are present here. We have a recommendation from you all on a warrant process. Are you guys ready to share that with us, Maureen? I think maybe Mike touched base with you about sharing with us.
Yeah, we are.
All right.
So the last time we presented was March 1st. We had a recommendation on how to change the signing of the warrant process, but we've made changes to that recommendation since. So it's a long one. I sent it to you in email. I don't know if you want to show it. It might be easier to show. The first portion that you guys are going to see is the track change. The track change from March 1st. And then the bottom one is the actual recommendation. So that's the track change from what we last discussed on March 1st. And then at the bottom, you can see the recommendation, and I'll read it. The budget and warrant subcommittee recommends that the NRSD school committee shall designate one committee member from the budget and warrant subcommittee chair and a secondary designee. The designees will be assigned for the purpose of authorizing payroll, benefits, and accounts payable, provided the opportunity has been given for all school committee members to review, ask questions, and receive responses prior to the authorization. This provision shall not limit the responsibility of each member of the board in the event of non-compliance. Once signed by the designee, the warrants can thereby be included as part of the consent agenda for approval at the subsequent regular school committee meetings. So this is a recommendation to make a new protocol in our school committee protocols. It changes that, the fact that we would all be signing off on the warrants every two weeks, and just the budget warrant subcommittee chair would be responsible for that, or the designee if he's not available, or she.
So would you like to make a motion?
We weren't sure if we should make a motion or if we had to discuss it. Should I make a motion?
So I think we make a motion.
Make a motion?
Yeah. And then we can discuss it afterward.
So I should make a motion to take this recommendation for the warrant process.
To adopt this recommendation as a protocol for the school subcommittee going forward.
I'll second that. So guys, any, I know that we talked about this last time, and ultimately, it seems to me, giving the budget and warrant subcommittee chair, identifying that as the one person, the NGL says we can identify as a person who signs. There will also be, let's assume that that person is not able to fulfill their duties on vacation, whatnot, there will be a secondary designee. Okay? By the budget and warrant subcommittee or by the whole committee?
I think the whole committee has to.
Identify the designee.
Yeah.
All right. Any discussion on this? Go ahead, Chandra.
I'm just a little concerned with the language provided that the opportunity has been given for all school committee members to review. Doesn't that put us back in the boat that if one of us is unavailable and we haven't had the opportunity to review, and then you still can't move ahead with signing it?
I think the idea there is just to say that the person shouldn't be just immediately signing off on it without having given a sufficient amount of time, like probably about a week for the committee to look at it, provide questions, get responses from the administration before signing off on it. That's the, that's the intended thought process there. But if you think we should need to change the language to reflect that better, we certainly could consider that.
And you would vote no on the motion, so.
And the time is, the time that we currently have from when we get the warrants to when we typically sign. But I think it's just more defining that questions would have to go to the signer. Like, in this case, it would be Mike. So questions have to go to Mike. He has to be aware of all questions. He has to circulate them through the administration and get responses instead of us just like asking, sending an email back to whoever sends the warrants out on a bi-weekly basis.
I don't feel the need to change the language if that's intended. It makes sense.
Any other questions?
I don't know if this is just my reading of it, but I feel like the way it's worded is a little unclear in terms of, the intent, it sounds like, is to designate the chair person with this responsibility and/or a designee. Or I feel like there's standard language that's usually like and/or their designee that might be clearer than what this says, which is designate one committee member, the chair, and a secondary. I don't know if this is semantics or if anybody else was confused, but I was confused when I read it, but it's clear when you explain it. I just don't know if it would, if there's a clearer way of stating it.
Or their designee.
Well, as I read this, it's saying, authorizing the designate one committee member, the budget warrant subcommittee chair, and a secondary designee. Right? So your, secondary implies the second person has authorization assigned in the event that the designee cannot. By virtue of the secondary designee. I'm going to look to my left for guidance on that because you're the awesome contractor.
I would tend to disagree with that. I think you could clearly delineate that, you know, we're authorizing one committee member, budget warrant chair, and in the event that the budget warrant subcommittee chair could not sign, the secondary designee will stand at his stead. So I, so the fact this is in a secondary because you got the designee, and I know it's in parentheses, it will be assigned for purposes. I think you could argue it has to be both. So I would tend to suggest that you put some qualifying language in there that it's-
I'm owned to with attorney-
But that's, you know, that's what we do. We suspend everything.
Are we going to say it three times so that everybody understands? Are we saying it implies you need both signatures?
I think it's a reasonable interpretation.
So should it say or an alternate designee rather than and a secondary? Because and usually implies both. Or means either or. So I think the choice of the word and might be the biggest part of the problem. And this choice of the word secondary is also contributing. So if it's said alternate rather than secondary, would that be clearer?
Or their designee. Is that a choice of that?
The idea is you're going to have the budget and warrant subcommittee chair as the designate, correct? He's the one that's going to, he or she is going to be looking. I want to say that the budget warrant subcommittee recommends that, actually, the motion to be that we move to designate the chair of the budget warrant subcommittee to be authorized to sign payroll, benefits, and accounts payable warrants. And in the absence of the unavailability of the subcommittee chair, the committee has a designee appointed to therefore sign instead. Something to that effect.
I think we can just say the chair will be assigned for the purposes of, the chair or their designee. Doesn't that clear it all up and we get rid of the reference?
So the chair, the chair is going to designate who signs?
Oh, as opposed to the school committee?
Yeah, we're authorizing the chair to sign, so we should also be authorizing or appointing a secondary designee. It could be the vice chair of the budget warrant subcommittee, or it could be the chair, chairperson, excuse me, Madam Chairman.
So where are we? So we've proposed this language. It sounds like we're saying we need to change this language. Do we need to take it back to the subcommittee to revise it? Or do we revise it now and rescind the motion?
We can just revise the amendment, or amend the motion, rather.
Maureen proposed it so she could withdraw the motion. If she withdraws it, you would allow that as, or you second it?
Oh, but the motion belongs to the committee now.
But was the motion seconded?
It wasn't.
It wasn't seconded?
It wasn't seconded.
Oh, did you second it?
I seconded it.
Did you second it?
We did.
Jo's taught me a few things. So we can just do a friendly amendment, can't we? So the friendly amendment would change it to or a designee, or a secondary designee chosen by the school committee. The designee will be assigned for the purposes of-
So could we just end, so could we just end with committee member of the budget and warrant subcommittee? And then a new sentence would say, in the event that he or she is unavailable, then the secondary designee, or something like that? Because-
Yeah.
I know.
It's not going to be easy.
I think Maureen is in the process of editing as we speak.
Are you, Maureen?
Mm-hmm. In the, that the designee is unavailable, a secondary designee is chosen by the school committee?
Joe's shaking his head.
In the event that the chairperson of the budget and warrant subcommittee is otherwise unavailable to execute and sign, then it should be up to, I'm suggesting the chair, you know? That makes it very simple. Or you could say somebody in the budget warrant. I don't know if you guys have a, do you have a vice chair in the budget warrant?
No, Maureen is our vice.
Secretary. The secretary. Yeah, then the secretary.
The intent there, I think, too, is that the budget and warrant subcommittee has their ear to the ground best. And so the secretary would be the designee. Maureen, are you amenable to that change?
Yes.
And I seconded it, and I'm also acceptable of that change. And so because it's a friendly amendment, we don't need to vote on the amendment. We can just vote on the-
Am I saying secretary?
Well, the first thing I'm trying to gather is that Joe is suggesting that we take out a part that says designate one committee member and just say designate the budget warrant subcommittee chair.
Yep.
Yeah.
Because that's implied anyway.
And then, Maureen, if you want to resend that to me, I can reject it.
Committee member, you should just designate.
I'm on the world map.
Very useful for a history teacher.
Am I saying a secondary designee?
The secretary of the budget and warrant would be the alternative.
That makes sense, but what, like, if we're both not unavailable, that's why we were keeping a kind of a-
We're screwed. But then, what's the purpose of your motion, then?
You have to have a secondary designee that everyone knows is the designee for that period of time that will filter the questions. Because it could really be anyone. We're all authorized to do it.
But if you were both unavailable, then the school committee could just vote.
Correct.
Someone else pass the motion, decide it. Change a protocol.
Correct.
Whatever, right?
That could be a problem, though. No matter which two people we chose, it is possible that both of those people could be unavailable.
Budget warrant secretary will be the designee.
Second.
No, sorry, guys. So, Maureen, whenever you have it, just email it to me.
Okay.
Lita, can you send it to me once it's all decided on?
I surely will.
Tell her it's on.
Wait, I can't, I swear. Okay, just send it.
Okay.
I should have changed SC to school committee.
You need to say what the...
Yeah, to, to... I think it got cut by accident. To sign the warrants.
It says in the next sentence, though, does it not?
The first sentence is, doesn't make any sense. You have to designate, let me do something.
Well, that's, that sentence, the designees will be assigned, should go between the first two sentences, right? Budget and Warrant.
This was our elimination, the commas. Are you resending it?
We had a problem with this in the meeting, too. We just had a really long sentence, and we tried to punctuate it.
That's why Google Docs is your friend.
Just in light of the time, is there any urgency to getting this done today?
Uh, no.
Yeah.
Other than torture, worry, no. There was a motion on the floor, though.
I think we agree to the intent of the amendment, don't we?
Yeah. I think, well, I don't know if we, oh, yeah, 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 for the change.
Yeah, to the, I feel like the bridge word's missing, and the intent is there.
So what are we gonna do? Because I mean...
The very first sentence, the Budget and Warrant Subcommittee recommends that the NRSD School Committee shall designate one committee member, the Budget and Warrant Subcommittee Chair, to sign and execute the warrants. Yes. Should be added right there.
Can you say, can you say, the, 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 the Budget and Warrant Subcommittee would move to recommend that the chairman or the chairwoman, the chairperson of the Budget and Warrant Subcommittee be authorized to execute on behalf of the district committee any and all warrants intended to district business. In the event that the chair is unavailable, authority will then vest in the secretary of the, of the Budget and Warrant Subcommittee. Can you just leave it at that?
What he said.
Yeah.
The reason we added the additional language is that we wanted to make sure that the committee understood that just by doing this, they don't dissolve themselves from the responsibility of having to, within the warrant, by just a warrant, so...
Joe, by virtue of the fact that you said it,
Yeah.
and the leader will transcribe this when she listens to the meeting, we present it in the minutes, if there's any element to authorize it.
Maureen and I are both okay with the small, little editing change that was just done. Is there any further discussion on that concept of giving that power? Any discussion? All right, so all those in favor, please raise your hand. And I hope that's not from pure exhaustion. I don't think it was. It was unanimous, and it's a good, it's, I think, a good protocol. Thank you, B and W.
Yeah, thank you for taking that up.
Guys, I'm gonna just say that the next matter here is Subcommittee business. And I wonder if there's anything super pressing that the subcommittees need to report that cannot wait until the next time around? I feel like maybe the only exception is here, with the school building committee, so go ahead, Jo.
Okay, so April 6, we had our monthly meeting. Just to give the committee an update, the Office of Inspector General did approve our CM, CM at risk application. So that has been approved. I will cut to the quick, but we had our building, we had our building tours on April 1st. We had about fourteen people that were there. Ms. Park and Ms. Cohen, with special guest, appeared. Thirteen, fourteen people, it was very enlightening. I think the only thing that I, we really need to touch on at this point is some future issues. So right now, the, and I, it was supposed to be this week. The schematic design was supposed to be submitted to the estimators. We should be having our cost estimation by the 12th, 13th of May. The district, excuse me, the building committee sometime between now and June will be making a recommendation to this committee to incur debt, at which point, we're looking at perhaps the 24th or the 28th of July for this committee to vote on the recommendation of the building committee. Just so you understand, we're looking at September for the town meetings and the debt exclusion votes, but the OPM is recommending that we look at a July date for our vote on the incurrence of debt to somewhat minimize the time subsequent to the, well, actually, not to minimize the time, but to expedite the, accelerate the construction schedule. So the sooner that we can get the votes in favor of the incurrence of debt, or, excuse me, it's not a vote in favor of the incurrence of debt. It is a vote not, what did I say? We said, we're not, we're looking to, we don't want the district communities to veto our incurrence of debt. That's essentially what the vote would be in September. So what we're looking to do is have this vote in July with our town meetings and debt exclusion votes in September. And the reason we're not pushing it towards August or what have you is to, we're trying to minimize the amount of time between the time of the committee votes to incur debt and the time we go out to bid. So time is money in construction. The OPM is recommending to get those big packages out sooner rather than later. So we're looking at the end of July for that debt incurrence vote.
And so what that basically means is to the, to all the people who will be on the committee in July, what the election, you know, we don't know what the elections will bring us, but for the committee in July, we are going to need to meet in that timeframe Jo just identified. So a meeting will be added to the committee's schedule in July, which is unusual. It will be virtual. So that might help. I know I'm on, I'm on vacation, but I will be there. And so will you, hopefully. So any questions? All right, thanks, Jo, again. Tremendous amount of work. It's all ramping up right now, so keep your ear to the ground on this and ask your questions if you have them.
Just one quick thing, I just wanted to, Superfan sent out that you have a meeting with the TAs today. So let me just give you those dates very quickly. Bolton and Lancaster are looking at the 16th or 18th for their town meeting.
September.
Can I qualify this? I'm sorry?
These are recommendations that are gonna be made to their select boards.
Okay. I'm sorry, these are the recommendations. 16th or 18th for Bolton and Lancaster, the 16th for Stowe, the 25th in Bolton and Lancaster for debt exclusion vote, and the 23rd to 25th in Stowe for debt exclusion vote.
September.
September, yes.
So more, way more to come on that. All right, everybody, my...
Well, so hold on.
Oh, go ahead.
Budget and warrants, there's one thing that we wanted to bring up.
Yeah.
We discussed the possible creation of an OPEV Management Advisory Subcommittee, and we have a recommendation for it, so we'd like to bring that recommendation at the next meeting.
Fantastic. To create an advisory.
Mm-hmm. There's two other things that Ross presented to us over the past two meetings that were helpful for all of the school committee to hear about. So maybe I can work with you on where we can get that in the next few agendas related to warrants.
Yeah, absolutely.
And grants.
Oh, fantastic. All right, everyone, I'm gonna move to adjourn. Just a second. Thanks, Sharon. All those in favor?
I'm sure.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.